There are 49 members present. We have a quorum. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Japan, and please remain standing. I believe the Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by, I'm sorry, the invocation is going to be led by Alderman Moore.
Thank you. May we pray. Our Father, the Father of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. As we step to your throne of grace, we ask that you forgive us for our sins of commission and omission. Look beyond our faults and see our needs. Before we ask you for anything further, we magnify you, we glorify you, and lift you up high. We want to thank you for waking us up this morning, allowing us to see another day, a new day we've never seen before, a day we'll never see again. We want to thank you for keeping us from any danger. Every member of this body, and the mayor, and every county council member, is accountable for the death we see. It's not because we've been so good. We recognize it's because of your mercy and your unmerited favor called grace. Recognizing that you have kept us, we want to pray for the people who are on the front lines, our doctors, our nurses, our retail workers, the janitors, our first responders. We want to remember, oh Lord, the 177,326 souls in this world that has given way to this virus, the 45,343 in this country, the 1,468 in this state, and the 569 in Chicago. We are reminded that these are not just numbers, but they are our fathers, our mothers, our daughters, sons, husbands, wives, and friends. These are not just numbers. They are first responders like officers Marco DeFranco, Sergeant Clifford Martin, Officer Ronald Newman, firefighters Mario Arayo and Edward Singleton. There are activists and businessmen like Harold Davis, our city employees like Rebel Burke and Faith Renee Evans, the baby daughter of Luther Mae and Reverend Clay Evans. These lives are not just numbers. They are not statistics. We pray for these families. We ask you, Lord, to put your arms of love and comfort and peace around them. Recognizing that your grace is sufficient, in your word you said, "If your people which are called by your name shall humble themselves and pray and seek your face and turn from our wicked ways, then will we hear from heaven, and you will heal the land." So God, we are asking and humbly asking ourselves before you. We are praying. We are seeking your face by the way of the blood of Jesus. We are turning from our wicked ways. So we are asking you to heal the land. And when you heal the land, we will be mindful to continue to give you the praise, honor, and glory. We remember you because in your word you say, "When we do unto the least of us, we have done unto you." So in this council, we will clothe and naked. We will feed the hunger, care for the sick and the imprisoned. We will do unto you by giving to the least of these. So as we close this prayer, we ask that all night and all day, you keep your angels watching over us. And with that covering, we can go home, go to bed, pull the covers up around us, and know that in the morning, everything will be all right. We humbly ask this prayer in the miracle mattress work in name of our Lord and Savior. And every heart says, amen.
Bless America.
Thank you, Alderman. At this time, we'll begin the public comment.
Council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker is Ms. Jennifer Rose Gay.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, and members of the Chicago City Council. I am on the Board of Directors of the Horsemen's Council of Illinois, and I am also a draft horse owner. I am speaking to you today regarding ordinance 02019-4125. As you know, our lives have been turned upside down right now. This is not the time to get rid of horse carriages. When we return to public spaces, we will look for the carriages among the comforting, familiar icons of the Chicago landscape. Horses offer immeasurable health and emotional benefits to residents and visitors. Carriage horses serve as ambassadors not only to the past, but to the present and future of Chicago and the state of Illinois. Surrounded by a city of steel and machine, these horses may be the only contact with a large farm animal for children and adults alike. Interacting with these majestic animals can provide passengers with a brief oasis of calm in a chaotic world. If carriage horses can have such a profound effect on those who only spend an hour with them, describing the bond between a horse and its owner is nearly impossible. Horses may live for over 25 years, longer than most children live with their parents. Unfortunately, the allegations of mistreatment and insufficient care by proponents of this ordinance have been made by people who admittedly have no education about or experience with horses. Comparing draft horses to a human being or Animal 1/100th of its size is inaccurate. Draft horses are bred to perform heavy work in a variety of climates. The loaded draft horse pulls in a carriage is comparable to pulling your small child in a wagon through the park. Carriage horses are evaluated and trained thoroughly to remain calm and undisturbed. Proof of this is in their perfect record of over 35 years without a single serious accident in the city of Chicago. Carriage horses receive diligent daily care, and each carriage owner has a dedicated veterinarian. The horses are thoroughly inspected by Chicago Animal Care and Control on a regular basis to ensure they are physically able to perform their duties comfortably. In closing, voting on this ordinance in the midst of an unprecedented pandemic is not essential business nor time sensitive. We ask the city council to postpone the vote until such time that they may hear substantive testimony in person from all concerned parties, including equine veterinarians and industry professionals. If you do not wish to postpone the vote, then please oppose ordinance 02019-4125. Chicagoans will get through this with our traditional strength and fortitude.
Thank you, Ms. Rose Gay. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. John Varnis.
Good morning. I'm here. Good morning. My name is-
Please turn down your speaker, Mr. Varnis.
Okay, how's that?
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is John Varnis, and I'm an owner of a small property management firm in the 49th Ward. I've been involved in small to mid-sized multifamily properties in the city of Chicago for 40 years, both as an owner and as a property manager. And I'm speaking today in opposition to the ordinance that has been introduced by Alvin Martin allowing for a 12-month deferral of rent payment. I understand that this is a challenging time for everyone. The owners and managers that I have talked to understand the dire situation that some of our residents in, and those that are able, have extended payment plans to their tenants that have found themselves with no ability to pay the current rent. This ordinance produces a one-size-fits-all solution that disincentivizes tenants to seek alternative resources to meet their rental obligation or to come face-to-face with their landlord to create a tailored solution. This ordinance incentivizes unscrupulous tenants to obey their contractual obligation, knowing full well that owners have no access to eviction process. Alderman, you're not to grasp the devastating consequences that the implementation of this ordinance can have as it lacks necessary protections for property owners. Your ordinance speaks about Fannie and Freddie mortgage forbearance, but most mortgages held today are not sourced from these agencies. Lenders will still be looking for their payment. We will still need to pay our staff and suppliers to properly repair and maintain our property. We still need to pay the utilities, including the city, for the water our tenants use. We still need to pay for trash free halls, including the associated city fee. We still need to pay our taxes when they come due. Alderman, you are proposing a nuclear solution that will produce significant collateral damage. This problem needs a targeted response. Most of our tenants continue to work in our paycheck. Those that have been laid off or furloughed have access to incentive loan benefits. By your own count, only 86,000 Chicagoans out of nearly 1.5 million tenants have requested rental assistance. Alderman, you should not place the entire burden on property owners for those tenants to not have access to any other form of relief. This is a societal problem that demands a societal response. You ought to be looking at solutions that extend the funding of targeted programs, such as all Chicagoans emergency funds, to respond to those tenants that truly need assistance. Thank you for your time and this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Varnis. The next speaker is Mr. Lawrence Salas.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and distinguished members of the Chicago City Council. Thank you for allowing me this time today. I'd like to speak to you about the continued operations of the General Iron Recycling Plant located in 1909 North Clifton. I'm a resident of the 43rd Ward and have lived here for the past 13 years. I'm well familiar with the challenges of living less than a quarter mile away from this facility. We have lived through and experienced numerous events and the adverse findings by the EPA that the facility has committed violations based on onsite inspections in 2018 by the EPA. These violations were so severe that the EPA threatened fines of nearly $100,000 per day should they not be remedied. We've also experienced the noxious gas and uncontrolled emissions of air and water pollution when the facility caught on fire in December of 2015. We've also noticed the improvement in air quality following the shutdown of the facility. It's not uncommon at all to go out on a Sunday morning and experience what clean air without these noxious particulates in the air are present because the facility is closed. There's a metallic taste, literally, when you go outside and are present in the inner outside. This dust covers our outdoor services, such as our backyard grills, our patio tables, and the playground equipment that my son utilizes. And in the space being covered by this particulate dust that results from this facility's operating. COVID-19 is an extraordinary event and challenge for the city of Chicago, including both the healthy and ill persons alike. There's no doubt that we've seen much reported in the media that people who are already health-challenged will experience severe difficulties. There was a recent study performed by researchers at Harvard University that document that this high levels of air pollution will lead to higher rates of death from COVID-19. This is the kind of contamination that occurs every single day. We've seen the pictures of the terrible contamination resulting from the uncontrolled release of dust at the Hillpo facility in Hilton. And what we effectively have is that kind of a-
Thank you, Mr. Salas. Mr. Salas, thank you, but your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. Leodis Thomas.
Good morning. My name is Leodis Thomas Jr., and I'm the owner of Iri Homes. I'm managing on the rent stop ordinance. I'm speaking- Good morning. I'm speaking on behalf of my fellow housing providers, and I'm a proud member of MBOA and the Greater Austin Development Association GATA. I've been a full-time housing provider for about eight years now on the West Side in Austin and Lawndale. The proposal ordinance really concerns me because I'm seeing both sides of the housing provider type as I have recently been them both. One, the small housing provider with one or few or a few small buildings, two to four flats, where one, non-paying tenant, opposed to be catastrophic. And two, the housing provider with several large apartment buildings with several tenants and a decent-sized staff. Both types of housing providers would be deeply affected by this proposed ordinance, and it could change the city of Chicago completely. What most people do not understand is while several tenants would be getting relief from not paying us, most housing providers would not be able to withstand the blow of having to foot the bill for everyone until further notice. We have no relief. Contrary to popular belief, the mortgage payment is just a drop in the bucket in terms of the housing provider's ongoing expenses, such as property taxes, water, gas expense, residence services, fixing toilets, sinks, cleaning the hallways, and painting apartments. Just this morning, I got a call about two plumbing backups that will cost me $325 each to clear out. We simply just cannot responsibly maintain our buildings if several tenants are able to withhold rent and now not allow us into our apartments that we are responsible to maintain. There could be a serious danger and several hazards that come with it. For the smaller housing providers, this will also be devastating to them even faster because most of them have very small margins. If tenants are allowed not to pay, it would take down the large housing provider just as quickly as it would huge homes in several Chicago neighborhoods. My peers and I take great pride in maintaining our apartment buildings to be awesome and comfortable places for our tenants to live. We take pride in being tax-paying assets to our neighborhoods and ward. The okay of rent freezes and strikes without replacing all of the rent that is being unpaid to the housing provider put those buildings at risk of being lost and then scooped up by REITs and other cities and country. I think that the general public has a misconception of what the average housing provider is and looks like. Most of the people, most are people with full-time jobs with a few properties that are held to get a few of the extra things in life.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The next speaker is Ms. Julie Heron.
Good morning. Good morning. Hello. My name is Julie Heron, and I'm a global real estate advisor with Jameson Sotheby's. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors for the Chicago Association of Realtors. Our group represents 15,000 members in all aspects of the real estate profession: brokers, property managers, appraisers, landlords, and others. I want to speak about the ordinance which will allow renters to pay 12 months from now. This is another example of local government overreach. We agree tenants need relief, but tenant relief cannot be a serious discussion without mortgage relief. Yesterday at the budget hearing, Alderman Susan Sladowski Garza asked the city council to have faith in the appointed leaders in the city. I am asking the city council to have faith in the landlords. The ordinance being proposed by Alderman Matt Martin not only lacks faith in landlords, but it hurts landlords. The ordinance as written does nothing to protect the landlord if the reduction period passes, the tenant moves, fails to pay the rent. What relief does the landlord have? The sponsor will say, "Seek a remedy in small claims court." That is a textbook answer. But spending more money to collect monies owed is not a realistic answer. This is a stressful time for everyone, but having the city council tip the scale unfairly and unnecessarily only adds to distress. During this crisis, landlords have extended themselves, and most have agreed to private arrangements with tenants. The legislation proposed takes away any incentive for tenants to agree to a private arrangement. This ordinance adds insult to injury by barring late fees as a matter of law. Many landlords are waiving late fees. Common sense approaches are flourishing. The heavy hand of the city is unneeded. With the way this language is drafted, very little proof needs to be offered to prove a COVID-related reason for the reason why rent is late. So any tenant who wants to take advantage of this broad language can be tardy with the rent and claim a COVID emergency. Was this contingency considered? The Alderman is calling on property owners to restructure their finances. I trust that each of you who plan to vote for this matter will also shuffle your finances and the city portion of the Cook County Property Tax Bill in zero. To add, ask landlords to forego rent for 12 months. I ask you to follow your own lead and reduce property tax bills for 12 months. Please consider the proposal before you and ask yourself, "Is it fair to place this burden on landlords?" Thank you for letting me speak, and I wish you all a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next speaker is Mr. David Moby.
Hello, Mayor Lightfoot and the council members. My name is David Moby. I serve as treasurer for the Horsemen's Council of Illinois and have over 40 years of experience in the horse industry, including working as an equine investigator for the state of Illinois for 10 years. This means that I am trained in observing and detecting animal abuse. In addition, I manage a 400-head horse farm, have a degree in animal science, and have published numerous articles in scientific journals. Carriage horses are the ambassadors of the city of Chicago. Surrounded by a city of steel and concrete, these animals may be a city dweller's or tourist's only contact with a large farm animal. Seeing, touching, smelling, and connecting with these animals offers immeasurable health and emotional benefits. I can tell you from personal and professional experience, carriage horses love to interact with people of all ages. For many families, carriage horses and their drivers may be the only contact they have with agriculture and livestock in their lifetime. Horses have always operated in crowded conditions with noise and even chaos. I know from personal experience how adaptable horses are and how well they do in city conditions. When I worked at Horizon Farms, one of our clients donated their retired racehorse to the Chicago Police Department. The department retrained the horse, which was a farmer thoroughbred racehorse, and he became one of the best police horses they have ever had. Chicago carriage horses are carefully trained and receive scrupulous care in housing. As a representative of the Horsemen's Council, I have personally inspected the horses and stables and have found no reason for concern. These horses are well cared for, happy, engaged, and healthy, and their environment is clean and well-kept. As an individual with beef roots in science-based agriculture and animal care, on behalf of myself, the Horsemen's Council of Illinois, and the Cook County Farm Bureau, I dispute the unsubstantiated proposition that using horse-drawn carriages is a form of cruelty to the horses. There is simply no justification for this contention. I respectfully request that rather than an end-
Mr. Moby, we want to thank you, but your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. John Gorman.
Good morning. My name is John Gorman. I'm a librarian and resident of 26th Ward. I am deeply concerned about the implications of the mayor's emergency executive ordinance. The ability for the mayor to unilaterally alter the city budget with no legislative accountability is a dangerous power, all too reminiscent of the past two administrations. While it is essential that the city provide greater levels of service to its most vulnerable communities during the COVID crisis, this must be done with accountability to its citizens, or else federal funds run the risk of becoming yet another mayoral flush fund. The city council must have the ability to oversee changes to budget and reject capricious ones. Further, any emergency use of federal COVID funds must include relief to Chicagoans who rent or pay mortgages. The massive increase in unemployment is not being sufficiently addressed by the increases to unemployment insurance. I say nothing of the pre-existing inequalities that already left Chicagoans in precarious housing. To avoid a wave of homelessness, the city must enact a rent and mortgage freeze and use the federal funds to offset the impact on builder-owner purchase services. Renters and those who pay mortgages must not be held retroactively liable for back rents or mortgage payments during the period they could not pay. And this must be enacted by ordinance and not mayoral decree. We must also not leave out those who are already experiencing homelessness out to dry. Their inability to safely sequester themselves puts them at extreme risk of contracting COVID and represents a grave health crisis. A fund to place people experiencing homelessness into individual housing units must be a part of any emergency ordinance. This is a matter of basic justice and decency, and would be a profound betrayal of our city's moral character if we did not protect our neighbors without homes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. The next speaker is Ms. Carla Langston. Ms. Langston, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Yeah, my name is Carla Langston, and I'm an uptown homeowner and member of One Northside and Northside Extra Justice. My main concern is how there seems to be a level of policing going on in poor neighborhoods where people's rights are not considered, such as requiring IDs from folks on the streets and then arresting them and putting their lives in danger through these arrests. How is arresting people for congregating and putting them in an institution that enforces congregation a solution? If policing is about public safety, there's no way to keep us safe. I think this kind of behavior is reminiscent of behavior in Nazi Germany through war era. And I'm aware that visiting Nazi Germany as a comparison to anything tends to shut down conversations, but we are now living in a country with concentration camps. And even before the current disorder due to COVID-19, disaster capitalism was in full swing in this country, especially in Chicago. I watched the meeting on public safety on Monday where the Alders posed questions to the mayor's new choice for police superintendent, David Brown. And it didn't seem to me that the community involvement was really important to most of the questions. To the contrary, there seemed to be lots of calls for more community harassment and a lot of talk about improving existing programs like HOPA and CAPP. From what I've heard, David Brown has done good things in Dallas, and Chicago needs these changes in our policing that help build trust between the public and the police department. There's ordinance in Public Safety Committee from the grassroots Alliance for Police Accountability, or GAAP, that has mechanisms for more community engagement, including the selection of police leadership and, you know, the work on policy. And I encourage the mayor and the city council to work with us to pass GAAP now. We think that civilian oversight ordinance and this new superintendent who believes in transparency and accountability are two more pieces of the puzzle that will begin to keep Black and Brown people safe in Chicago. And on the subject of COVID-19 recovery funding, it is my hope that the city provides mortgage relief and rent relief for its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. The next speaker is Ms. Debbie Hay.
I'm Debbie Hay. I'm Mayor Lightfoot and resident of the City Council. Hi, I'm Debbie Hay, a carriage driver and the owner of the Antico Garage Company. It has operated in Chicago for over 38 years. The horse carriage industry is my business. I put my horse and my animals- As a horse owner, I care for and handle my animals. Daily contact enables me to notice any potential illnesses. It also allows me to learn about each animal's personality and provide each horse's health with proactive manners. where it provides its point of health to access man. Through regular consultation with my veterinarian, we have developed specialized feeding and exercise programs to ensure animal's needs are met. My veterinarian also provides routine medical care for my horses, including vaccinations, physical exams, four times per year. My horses receive routine warming, hoof trimming, and vet history. To provide this high level of care to my horses, because I choose them to be responsible for my animals. Okay, my horses enjoy the drive, as you can tell from their calm demeanor. These went in harness and willingness to pull the carriage. You can also see how they reach out with their nose to engage people who approach them and readily accept the affection offered to them. Over the years, myself and my carriage drivers and the horses have helped families celebrate Christmas and other holidays, marriage proposals, birthdays, reunions, and weddings. My horses and carriages have also helped celebrate the North and South Side Irish Parade, appeared on Jennifer Hudson's Christmas special, and were a part of Muhammad Ali's daughter's wedding. My horse pulling a carriage have made appearances on The Steve Harvey Show, Oprah, and been part of several movies, including The Babe and Raw Deal with Arnold Schwarzenegger. And they have shown off our beautiful city to thousands of tenants and residents over the year. For many, stopping to see the horses, taking a photo, taking a ride is part of the Chicago experience. Carriage horses are an iconic part of Chicago. I respectfully ask that you allow the carriage industry to continue in this great city. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Our next speaker is Mr. Tom Benedetto.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and members of the Chicago City Council. My name's Tom Benedetto and the government affairs director with the Chicagoland Apartment Association. Members of our association alone represent over two hundred and thirty thousand apartment units of all types. Multifamily community is currently operating as an essential business under Governor Pritzker's stay-at-home order, and our work is essential. Multifamily professionals are showing up to work each day to fully occupy buildings, delivering meals and packages straight to tenants' doors, filling work orders on broken toilets and sinks, and ensuring the cleanliness of common spaces to prevent the spread. The majority of Chicago's building operators are small business owners who depend on their real estate for livelihoods. In tens of thousands of recent instances, they're practicing grace and patience by working with tenants individually on extended payment plans and significant grace periods, just as the mayor is asking to, to ensure the strength of Chicago's neighborhoods through the crisis. We're all in. We recognize the human need for housing that leaders like my personal alderman, Matt Martin, and others on the council are trying to protect, but we believe mandating a one-size-fits-all twelve-month repayment plan ordinance is the wrong approach. To offer just one concrete example of why building owners will have no recourse or to expensive and practical lawsuits to collect rents from tenants who decide to move out during their twelve-month repayment period. Make no mistake, we're all in this together and we need holistic housing solutions. That's why we want the great leaders present today to advocate for rental assistance at the federal level and phase four of the CARES Act. The city must urge Congress to fund an emergency rental assistance program for those who are impacted by the COVID-19 crisis and struggle to cover housing expenses. In the meantime, multifamily communities will continue to do their part to address the needs of their tenants, as they have been demonstrated. And I echo the appreciation expressed by the mayor and city council by the speakers before me. In these unprecedented times, Mayor Lightfoot and the fifty aldermen present today, force their hard work staff as well, have shown the nation that Chicago is represented by real leaders. We appreciate the spirit of what Alderman Martin is attempting to get at, we do, even if we may differ on what would be the best solution. Thank you all for your exemplary service to the public and please be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benedetto. The next speaker is Ms. Sheila Dansler.
Yes, good morning. My name is Sheila Dansler. I'm a residential real estate broker with Danielson Sotheby's International Realty. I'm also a member of the Chicago Association of Realtors and would like to address Alderman Matt Martin's ordinance set for introduction at this meeting. I am against this ordinance and ask you, the city council, to stand against it too. With fifteen years of experience in real estate, this ordinance is short-sighted and harmful, especially to small landlords. I have assisted many first-time homebuyers purchase their homes. Oftentimes, it's a two-to-four unit building in which they live in one unit and rent out the others. These buyers have done all the right things. They saved up for a down payment. They've maintained good credit by paying their bills on time. They've completed the complicated process of securing a loan and are now responsible homeowners and landlords. Their margins on expenses and income is low. This ordinance would destroy them as many can't afford to quote any rent payment for up to twelve months. It's important to me that you hear some of their stories and I'll read some quotes. One is from Tori Fisher, an owner in the Greater Grand Crofting community. She states, "I can appreciate considerations to assist honest, hard-working individuals economically impacted by the COVID-19 situation. However, I do not own hundreds of units. I own one. I'm the sole provider for my household. I take care of an elderly parent, and I rent out the other unit below fair market value. I have spent money upgrading my property, replacing windows, et cetera. This ordinance could cause irreversible damage." Another one is from Zuri Ferguson, who is from Woodlawn. "I'm a first-time buyer, recently purchased a two-flat at Woodlawn less than two years ago. I've recently overcome the struggles that first-time homebuyers of unexpected expenses. I take care of my family using the rental income from the unit below. I have asked my mortgage company for deferment and for forbearance. They said it is not possible due to the type of loan that I have. This type of ordinance would cause irreversible damage." And I have other quotes as well. I'd also like to read a statement on behalf of other landlords offering a solution, the city of Chicago, to create a $300 million fund for rental assistance for tenants given directly to property owners. For CHA to grant emergency temporary housing vouchers to non-CHA participants who have lost wages due to COVID-19. Abatement of water, sewer, and scavenger bills from March fifteenth, 2020 to the end of the shelter in place. Forgiveness of tickets for overflowing trash issued March fifteenth through the end of shelter in place and payment for CHA unit abatement from March fifteenth, not forcing tenants to move out.
Thank you, Ms. Dansler. We appreciate your comments. The time allotted for the public comment period has expired.
Concludes the public comment period. Mr. Clerk, communication?
A series of communications from our honor the mayor, the honorable the city council of the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement for TIF assistance to Board of Education. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, requested the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with ordinances authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements for TIF assistance with the Chicago Park District. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing issuance of multifamily bonds, a loan, TIF funding, tax credits, and a conveyance for Emmett Apartments Limited Partnership. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Aviation, I transmitted with an ordinance providing for COVID-19-related relief for airport concessionaires. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Aviation, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with the American Heart Association for the placement of fracking kiosks at Midway International Airport. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Aviation, I transmitted with an ordinance amending section two dash twenty dash zero twenty of the municipal code regarding authority in conjunction with Cap twenty-one related work at O'Hare International Airport. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmitted with a Fund nine twenty-five amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Executive Director of the Board of Ethics, I transmitted with an ordinance amending chapter two dash one fifty-six of the municipal code regarding lobbying. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Assets, Information and Services, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing a sale of vacant property at one thirty-three eleven South Hurley on behalf of the Board of Education. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Department of Housing Commissioner, I transmitted with an ordinance establishing the emergency relief for affordable multifamily properties program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a multifamily loan agreement for South Chicago YMCA senior housing. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmitted with an ordinance amending chapters two dash twenty-five and nine dash one twelve of the municipal code regarding wheelchair accessible dispatch. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmitted with, together with Alderman Suarez, or, oh, sorry, apologies, with Oliveren Sawyer, Garza, Wagaspec, and Vegas, an ordinance prohibiting employer retaliation and an associated technical correction to chapter one dash twenty-four of the municipal code. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmitted with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, Prefers Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. The Honorable Anna Valencia, City Clerk, hereby informs the city council that the following documents were filed in her office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Mayoral Executive Order number twenty twenty dash one regarding emergency operations related to the COVID-19 outbreak. Also, Mayoral Executive Order number twenty twenty dash two regarding equal access to city administered services and benefits. And the Department of Health Order number one, twenty twenty one dash one regarding shelter in place only applicable to persons with COVID-19 symptoms. Also, the Department of Health Order number twenty twenty dash two regarding duties of hospitals and other congregate facilities regarding COVID-19 virus. And Department of Health Order number twenty twenty dash three regarding applying Governor's Stay-at-Home Executive Order for the closure of Chicago parks, beaches, paths, trails, and recreational facilities. And Department of Health Order number twenty twenty dash four regarding medical data sharing requirement. And also, Department of Health Order number twenty twenty dash five regarding the nine PM cessation of alcoholic liquor sales. Also placed on file were the city treasurer's preliminary annual report of asset allocation, disposition, credit quality, and written investment policy of total holding. And the city treasurer's annual report of the Chicago Community Catalyst Trust LLC for the year 2019. Also placed on file was the Civilian Office of Police Accountability Annual Report for the year 2019 and the Civilian Office of Police Accountability Quarterly Report for 2020 Q1. Also placed on file was the Inspector General's Audit of Chicago Police Department and Department of Family Services Administration of Juvenile Intervention and Support Center and the Inspector General's Quarterly Report for 2020 Q1. City Clerk Valencia also informs the city council that all those actions which were considered by the city council at the recessed meeting held on March eighteenth, 2020, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on April twenty-second, 2020 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings, City of Chicago. City Clerk Valencia also informs the city council that all those matters which were considered by the city council at the reconvene meeting that was held by video conference on April fifteenth, 2020, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on April twenty second, April twenty-second, 2020 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City of Chicago. City Clerk Anna Valencia also transmits herewith the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring city council action. Zoning classifications of particular areas which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Claims against the City of Chicago which are referred to Committee on Finance. Also, a historical landmark designation of the Blackwell Israel Samuel AME Zion Church Building at thirty-nine fifty-six South Langley Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And a historical landmark designation for the Muir Northside Multiple Property District at various portions, on various portions of North Tierborn Street, East Erie Street, West Grand Avenue, East Huron Street, West Ontario Street, North Rush Street, North State Street, and East Superior Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. That concludes the mayor's, the mayor's and clerk's communications.
Next are committee reports. And just to remind you, any alderman wishing to speak on an item, use the teleconference raise hand function to be recognized. First, we're going to go to Chairman Talia Pharoah on the Committee of Public Service, Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam President. And members of city council reporting for your committee on public safety, for which a meeting was held on Tuesday, March tenth, 2020, and April twentieth, 2020. There was one item before the committee on March tenth, 2020, for which, for which the committee recommended passage by voice vote. Item number one on the agenda of March tenth is the Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter eight dash four dash one twenty-seven concerning cyber stalking and cyber flashing. There was one item before the committee on April twentieth, 2020, for which the committee recommended passage by roll call vote. Item number one on the agenda of April twenty twenty was the appointment of David O'Brien as the City of Chicago Superintendent. If there is no objections, Madam President, I move for the passage of the first item, A, I'm sorry, O-two-zero-one-nine dash eight-zero-two-six, the Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter eight dash four dash one twenty-seven. I move for that, not by roll call vote, but by voice vote. And I move for the passage of the appointment of Superintendent David O'Brien by roll call vote.
And let's take them separately. As to the first item, the motion is for a move of passage by voice vote. Not hearing or seeing any objections, so ordered. As to the second item, all in favor, say aye.
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 All say nay. All right, as to the second item, the chairman has asked for a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. And this is the appointment of David O'Brien as the next superintendent of the Chicago Police Department.
Oliveren Laspada.
Aye.
Oliveren Hopkins.
Aye.
Oliveren Dowell.
Aye.
Oliveren King.
Aye.
Oliveren Hairston. Oliveren Hairston. Oliveren Sawyer.
Aye.
Aye.
Oliveren Hairston both aye.
Oliveren, Oliveren Mitchell. Oliveren Harris. Oliveren Billa.
Yep.
Oliveren Sodloski-Garza.
Aye.
Oliveren Thompson.
Aye.
Oliveren Cardenas.
Aye.
Oliveren Quinn.
Aye.
Oliveren Burke.
Aye.
Oliveren Lopez.
Aye.
Oliveren Coleman.
Aye.
Oliveren Moore.
Great selection by the mayor, aye.
Oliveren Curtis.
Aye.
Oliveren O'Shea.
Aye.
Oliveren Taylor.
Aye.
Oliveren Brookins.
Aye.
Oliveren Rodriguez.
Aye.
Oliveren Tabarez.
Aye.
Oliveren Scott.
Aye.
Oliveren Sito Lopez.
Aye.
Oliveren Maldonado.
Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Telefiero.
Aye.
Alderman Ruboyes.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagispec.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mits.
Aye.
Alderman Spazato.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Keppelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Your Honor, there are fifty a's, no nays.
The, uh, have it, the matter is not a pass. Chairman Talia Pharo. I'm sorry, Chairman, uh, or Alderman Thompson for the, on the motion for reconsideration.
Consider the last vote.
On the, on the motion for reconsideration, on the motion for reconsideration, we did hear you, Alderman Thompson, thank you.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, no.
No.
I think, I think that no's have it. Motion for reconsideration is denied. Chairman Talia Pharo, um, would you move for the floor privilege to allow a Superintendent to adjourn the body?
Madam President, um, I move, um, at this time for the body, or I move that the Superintendent of Police, newly elected, um, newly appointed Superintendent of Police, um, be allowed to address the body.
Uh, hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Council, for your vote today. I am honored, I am very humbled, and I feel extremely privileged to serve the citizens of Chicago, the residents of Chicago, and I look forward to meeting each and every one of you, riding in your district, and getting to know you, and you getting to know me much better. Thank you so much again for your votes today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. That can, that concludes the report of your Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, next is the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, Chairman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held meetings on March eleventh, twenty twenty, and April twenty-first, twenty twenty. The Committee recommends passage of two items. First is a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year twenty twenty within Fund Number nine twenty-five for the Department of Housing, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Family and Support Services, the Chicago Police Department, and the Office of Emergency Management and Communications. Um, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Not hearing or seeing any objections, so ordered.
Madam President, point of clarification.
Please identify yourself because we can't see who's speaking.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Yes, sir.
Is this, uh, the emergency powers ordinance, just as a point of clarification?
I do not believe so. Chairman Dow.
No, this is, uh, that's the second item, Alderman Rosa.
All right, thank you so much.
Coming up. Okay, the second item is an ordinance authorizing various emergency actions undertaken in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This was a direct introduction to the committee. I move passage of this public safety, of this item by the first favorable roll call vote on the, of the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Madam President. Alderman Lopez.
Yes, Alderman Lopez.
Madam President, Alderman Ramirez Rosa and I move the defer and publish of this ordinance and are joined and seconding by Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Sito Lopez, and Chairman Jeanette Taylor.
Uh, the matter will be deferred and published, and we will be coming back on Friday. Alderman Mitchell.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to suspend the rules.
They're so happy, look at them.
I move to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of an ordinance setting the date and time for the next meeting for Friday, April twenty-fourth, at one P M.
Objection to that ordinance.
Um, Alderman Mitchell, you are moving a passage of the, your ordinance by voice vote?
Move passage by voice vote.
Madam President.
He's on the ordinance, Madam.
There's a motion.
Pardon me?
A motion to lay that on the table.
Uh, who just spoke because I don't think we have a record? Who's to lay it on a motion?
Alderman Vegas.
Vegas. And Alderman Lopez called for a roll call vote on the ordinance and the meeting.
Um, for point of clarification, Alderman Lopez.
Which ordinance are you asking for a roll call vote on? The sound yet is started here.
Suspend the rules to allow for the consideration of the motion.
Alderman Lopez, you and Alderman Rosa moved to D N P.
Right.
Alderman Mitchell, um, then moved to.
Set the date.
To set the date. I don't understand what your issue is.
My issue, Madam President, is that I want this meeting to continue. I want the work that is scheduled for today's meeting to continue, and we deal with the next meeting, the end of this meeting, so that we are not adjourned early.
When you, when you moved to do a D N P, um, we adjourn.
No, you don't have to adjourn, it's scheduled for the next meeting.
And Alderman, Alderman Lopez, you moved to D N P, and Alderman Mitchell now has a pending motion.
Jack in.
Just let me finish, please. Alderman Mitchell now has a pending motion to, um, set a new date for the next meeting, which is this Friday, um, April twenty-fourth. That is the motion that, and we're going to, um, move forward with that motion. Alderman Mitchell moved for the passage by a voice vote.
For that roll.
Madam President.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, Alderman Mits. Yes, ma'am, Alderman Mits. I'm muted.
I don't, I, I think she's just stopping.
All right, I, Alderman Rosa, Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. I would like to speak on the motion that is before us, that is to end this meeting and to reconvene, I believe I heard, in two days. One, a motion to defer, I would like to speak against, uh, this motion and urge my colleagues to vote no, because, one, a motion to defer and publish does not necessitate that we immediately end the meeting. We can continue on with our regular order of business and continue to vote on the ordinances that need to be deferred today, uh, while at the same time allowing the motion to be deferred and published as it does have. Um, but in addition to that, I think that it is a mistake from those that want to move forward the emergency powers ordinance to so quickly end the meeting and reconvene it in two days, because it underscores the fact that we can so easily meet virtually, and it underscores the argument from the opponents of this power grab ordinance that ultimately is unnecessary, because we can do exactly what we're doing now. We can convene meetings in short notice, virtually, and get the business done of the people. So I think that we should continue on with regular business, I think we should continue on with the substantive matters that are before us. There is no reason why we have to end this meeting right now. We can continue on with the business of the people, and that's exactly what we should be doing in Chicago. Thank you.
The recognition of Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I was just seconding Alderman Mitchell's motion, and so I think you had, uh, there was a roll call.
Point of clarification.
I think of the roll call and the vote taken on Alderman Mitchell's motion with my second.
I, I believe you're correct.
Madam President, I have a point of clarification. Is Alderman Vasquez?
I think we have to vote on that motion, but.
I think we have a motion, we have a second for a roll call. Uh, Mister Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you.
And, and just as a point of clarification, what we are voting on is to set a new date for Friday twenty-fourth as to, uh, this City Council meeting.
Point of clarification, Madam President. So is this, just to, just to be clear, this is just to set the date for the next meeting, it is not to adjourn this one, is that correct?
It, it is, the motion is to adjourn this meeting.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
So, we're setting the new, the new motion, the motion is on setting the new date for the, um, next City Council meeting, which will be Friday, the twenty-fourth. Motion's by, um, Alderman Mitchell, seconded, um, by Alderman Thompson. So the vote is to set the new date for Friday, April twenty-fourth.
Point of, point of order. Point of clarification. This is Alderman Maldonado.
All right, and, and what would be helpful, folks, is, because we can't see you all at the same time, when you're speaking, please identify yourselves so I knew who, uh, to call.
This is Alderman Maldonado. Okay. Okay. My question is, if we both have commented on this ordinance, that means that we will adjourn, and the remaining, order of business, not only the emergency ordinance, but the remaining, um, matters before us, will we consider this coming Friday?
Well, we're going to do this in two stages. One is to set the, the, first, uh, is to set the new date. There will be a second motion, I would expect, um, to adjourn and resume on Friday.
For all the, on, for all the matters that were not considered today, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
Point of clarification, this is Alderman Hairston.
Yes, go ahead.
Did I hear, oh, thank you. Uh, did I hear a motion to lay on the table at some point? Did we forget that?
That was not, that was not in order because the ord, the motion to set the new date is a motion that we're voting on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Burke, did you have a?
Madam President, I, I thought what I heard, uh, the motion to be, I believe it was Alderman Mitchell, but I couldn't see him, to suspend the rules for the purpose of introducing a motion.
I believe that Alderman Mitchell was, um, asking for an suspension of the rules in order to, um, consider a, a motion for an ordinance setting the new date.
Which, which my understanding of the rules is that in order for that motion to prevail, there must be a two-thirds vote. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Very good.
So, uh, Alderman Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have a, were you, uh, being asked to speak?
Um, I took my hand down because the date, um, someone else right before me answered the same question, same point of order.
All right.
Roll call.
So this vote is, you know, a, a vote to, on whether to place Alderman Mitchell's, uh, motion for, uh, an ordinance, um, setting the new, um, City Council date for April twenty-fourth for the body. Going to take this step. First is, will we consider the ordinance? Suspend the rules to, uh, to consider the ordinance. All right, roll call vote, Mister, uh, Clerk.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
I'm a bit confused, but I believe aye.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Sedlaski-Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye, to suspend the rule.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Hell, no.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sito Lopez.
No.
Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado votes no.
I'm sorry, Alderman Maldonado.
Alderman Maldonado votes no.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
No.
Alderman Telefiero.
Aye.
Alderman Ruboyes.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
No.
Alderman Wagispec. Alderman Wagispec.
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mits. Alderman Mits. Alderman Spazato.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Mits, did you vote aye?
Yes.
Alderman Spazato.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Excuse me, Alderman Laspada votes no.
Alderman Tony. Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Keppelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Vasquez is a no.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Vasquez, did you report voting no? Your Honor, I have thirty-five yays and fifteen nays.
I believe that's sufficient number of votes to, uh, go to the next step. Uh, we are now going to, um, vote on Alderman Mitchell's, um, ordinance, uh, to reset the[1790.73] uh, to reset the city council, the next, uh, city council date of Friday, uh, April twenty fourth, at one P M.
One P M?
Yes, correct. Clark, please call the roll.
Madam President. Madam President.
I, I would just ask, please, since we can't see each other all at the same time, again, when you speak, identify who you are, and let me also just say.
Madam President, this is Alderman Irving.
Hold on, hold on one second, Alderman Irving. Also, let me just say, folks, um, I know that some people like, uh, the, the sport of this, but it's highly inappropriate for, and members of the city council to be using profanity.
Yes.
During this body, so I would admonish you to refrain in profanity.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Irving.
Uh, Madam President, I believe, uh, you said the motion was to recess, are you sure you, are we recessing or adjourning?
That's not what I said, what I said is, this next vote is to vote on Alderman Mitchell's, um, mo- ordinance to set a new date for city council of Friday, April twenty fourth, at one P M.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Roll call.
Please, clerk, uh, call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Is that an aye, Alderman?
Yes, yes.
Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Sedlowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye, aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez.
Nope.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis.
Aye, aye.
Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sito Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Telefiero.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagisback.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mits. Alderman Mits. Alderman Spazaro.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Keppelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Mits.
He's a friend of mine.
Aye.
The ball?
Hello?
Yes, Alderman, I have you. You have forty-nine, one. We have forty-nine ayes, one nay.
Marissa, my staff. Yes?
Mute Nick, mute.
Okay.
All right, the, the, the ordinance passes to set the next, uh, council date, uh, for this Friday, uh, April twenty fourth. Alderman Mitchell, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I move that we adjourn.
Madam President.
Roll call.
Second.
Madam President, this is Alderman.
Don't need a roll call on an adjournment. Roll call.
Madam President, I'd like to speak on this motion.
I do not believe that the motion to adjourn is one in which there can be debate.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Clark, please call the roll. You don't need to.
Alderman Laspada.
No.
Alderman Hopkins.
Yes.
Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
No.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell.
Mitchell.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Sedlowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Brookins.